We will now call the common council meeting of October 17th, 2023 to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Here.
Lorik.
Here.
Ritz.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Everybody, please rise for pledge of allegiance. Lisa, you want to start us off?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes of 10:323. Everybody, please take a look. When you're convinced or satisfied, there's no discussion, errors, or omissions. Motion, please.
Marshall moves to approve the minutes of October 3rd, 2023.
Guzekowski, a second. Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Our first order of business is a consideration of a resolution of appreciation to Robert A. Carter, retiring police sergeant. Catherine, would you please read that on the record?
Certainly. Resolution number 12437101723, a resolution of appreciation to Robert A. Carter. Whereas Robert A. Carter began his employment with the city of Oak Creek on May 27th, 1997, as a full-time police officer, and whereas during his 26 years and three months of service, Robert A. Carter has been an integral part of the police department, serving as a patrol officer early in his career, serving as acting sergeant on April 23rd, 2010, until he was promoted to the rank of sergeant on February 24th, 2011. And whereas Robert A. Carter has been a valuable employee during his years of dedicated service with the Oak Creek Police Department, always striving to enhance the quality of life for the citizens of the city, and has been a model teammate for those he worked with, being well-known for his work ethic, his dedication to the department, and his leadership. And whereas Robert A. Carter received 18 combined departmental acknowledgements and awards. Most notably are the lifesaving award in 2004 from his actions in 1998, where he saved an infant by using CPR as the infant was no longer breathing. Award of Excellence in 2006 for his work as one of our first full-time undercover drug unit officers, and three more awards of excellence for his work on our Use of Force Unit, our Emergency Response Unit, and Honor Guard Unit, all of which have impacted both the Oak Creek Police Department and the community as a whole. Whereas Robert A. Carter served with honor, passion, and dedication on several subunits of the Oak Creek Police Department, Emergency Response Team, Use of Force Unit, Honor Guard Unit, Drug Unit, and Career Survival Unit. Through Robert A. Carter's tendency, leadership, tenacity, leadership, and dedication, the Oak Creek Police Department is more prepared, capable, and ready to serve the citizens of Oak Creek. And whereas for 15 years, Robert A. Carter served as a member of the Emergency Response Unit, achieving the rank of Master Operator, and serving as an Assistant Team Leader and Team Leader for eight years. And whereas Robert A. Carter was one of our first full-time undercover drug units officers from 2003 through 2005, developing and creating the unit into what it has become today, all while setting the bar for what it was expected of those who wanted to be in the drug unit. And whereas Robert A. Carter was a member of our Use of Force Training Unit for 12 years. During this time, he attained several instructor certifications. He worked countless hours as a trainer and supervisor of the training unit to ensure its success and that everyone was properly prepared to handle anything they encountered on patrol. Furthermore, he has been a role model and mentor for all of the trainers. And whereas Robert A. Carter is retiring from the Oak Creek Police Department after completing 26 years and three months of full-time service to the city of Oak Creek, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek, for and on behalf of the citizens of the city of Oak Creek, that sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to Robert A. Carter for his years of professional, dedicated, and faithful service to the city of Oak Creek and police department, and that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Robert A. Carter and his family for future years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Robert A. Carter, passed and adopted the 17th day of October, 2023.
Thank you, Catherine. At this time, I'll ask Chief Stucker to come up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Lot to say. I feel bad for Catherine. Is it not coming through? Am I coming through now? Okay. Lot to go through. A lot happened in many of our careers, especially Bob's. Bob's a very humble person, so when he exited, he wanted to go out the same way and not have a ceremony, not have any hoopla, and it's kind of the way that Bob lived and worked every single day was just to go about work, get it all done, set an example, but not bring any attention to himself. I'm sure, like we talked about earlier, Bob's not here, but I can expect that Bob's also a researcher and is probably watching online right now as we speak, because Bob likes to be in the know as well. So definitely well-deserved, and Bob had a very good career at first on a lot of things, especially our drug unit, and really becoming an example for many to follow, and I wish Bob the best wishes in retirement, and well-deserved. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Council, anything on Bob?
I would say, Mayor, just when you read this proclamation, just the resolution, it's amazing how invested of a teammate he was and how involved he was with each of the different parts of his through his years and his time with the police department, so it's good to wish him a happy retirement and enjoy life.
Well said, Chris. You know, I'm just going to put it out there. Chief kind of touched on this. Bob served 26 years in this city. The city he joined is not the city that he retired from. It's changed quite a bit. Police service and the needs of the city have changed quite a bit when it comes to protective services as well, and he laid the foundation for many of these units, as Catherine read in the proclamation, and he laid the foundation and the mentorship for those that have come behind him and will forever be grateful for Bob's contributions here for his 26 years plus of service. So on behalf of the common council, the residents of Oak Creek, and myself, Bob, I wish you a long and happy retirement. Well-earned. Thank you.
Casey's, he is watching. Thanks for your service.
So with that, can we have a motion, please?
I'll move to approve Resolution 12437-101723, resolution appreciation to Robert A. Carter, retiring police sergeant.
Marshall will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
And next, we have a mayoral proclamation recognizing Lung Cancer Awareness Month this November. Catherine?
Lung Cancer Awareness Month, November 2023. Whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer death among men and women in the United States and in Wisconsin in 2023, accounted for more deaths than colon cancer, breast cancer, and prostate cancer combined. And whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control, between 2016 and 2020, there were 3,470 new cases of lung and bronchus cancer reported in Milwaukee County, with 2,084 of those cases resulting in death. And whereas lung cancer is difficult to identify with many individuals not experiencing symptoms until it has reached an advanced stage, and for that reason, yearly lung cancer screenings are recommended for those who have a history of smoking or have quit in the previous 15 years. And whereas screening for lung cancer for high-risk individuals using low-dose computed tomography can lead to the earlier detection of lung cancer and save lives, reducing mortality by 20% when compared to screening by chest X-ray in the National Lung Screening Trial, and reducing the risk of death at 10 years by 24% in men and 33% in women is demonstrated by another large randomized trial. And whereas women diagnosed with lung cancer are more likely to be younger and never smokers, lung cancer incidence and mortality rates in women are rising relative to men. More women die from lung cancer than breast cancer every year, and by 2035, it is expected that more women will die from lung cancer than men. Whereas organizations working in the Oak Creek community, such as the American Lung Cancer Screening Initiative and Women's Lung Cancer Forum, are committed to educating about lung cancer and lung cancer screening and working to increase lung cancer screening rates in Oak Creek. And therefore, I, Daniel J. Bukavich, Mayor of the city of Oak Creek, do hereby proclaim November 2023 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Oak Creek, and recognize the need for research of lung cancer affecting women and lung cancer health disparities, and encourage all citizens to learn about lung cancer and early detection through lung cancer screening, dated the 17th day of October, 2023.
Thank you, Catherine. Council members, anybody have any words on Lung Cancer Awareness Month? I'll just, I'll keep it very brief, but if you've ever had somebody close to you, an acquaintance or family member have it, you'll know the importance of this going forward. It's an agonizing type of cancer that really just no coming back from once it progresses too far. Unfortunately, I've had that experience personally with some folks I know. It's excruciating to watch them go through it, whether it was their own demise from smoking and in some cases, it was non-smokers. So I do feel it's important that we bring public awareness to this, and for more information on any of this, you can always contact our health department, but please be aware of the dangers of it. No action is required on five. I'm going to make you do one more. This is a mayoral proclamation, item six for the Historic Evangelical Lutheran Emanuel Cemetery. Catherine?
Certainly. Historic Evangelical Lutheran Emanuel Cemetery. Whereas the Evangelical Lutheran Emanuel Cemetery is located at the address of 10870 South Chicago Road in the city of Oak Creek, Wisconsin, and whereas on August 31st, 2001, the Historical Society added the cemetery into the catalog of burial sites in the state. And whereas in 2001, Margaret Barris, curator, Oak Creek Historical Society, led a team to research the abandoned cemetery. The team made up of 15 volunteers that included Oak Creek High School students and Boy Scout Troop 316. The team cleared weeds, bushes, and trees, discovering new burials on that day after nearly a century of neglect. And whereas in 2001, Nicholas Marinsky earned his Eagle Scout Service Project Award, which included plan views of the entire cemetery, field notes taken during the mapping, names and dates as transcribed from the headstones, and the GPS coordinates for each grid mapped. And whereas Henry and Bertha Rhodey were the original owners of the cemetery land, they deeded the cemetery parcel to the Evangelical Lutheran Emanuel Congregation in 1871. The Rhodeys have three known children in the cemetery, Gustav Heinrich and Carl Rhodey. And whereas there are two Civil War veterans located in the cemetery, Private Frank Wilkie and Private William Miller. There are 18 known burials and others unknown who rest in unmarked graves. And whereas on October 8th, 2023, a ceremony was held at the cemetery to honor all those buried with a plaque erected by the city of Oak Creek, in which many attended, including family members of the buried. And whereas I, Daniel J. Bukavich, do hereby recognize the Historic Evangelical Lutheran Emanuel Cemetery and dedicate a plaque to the memory of those who lay in rest. And now therefore be it resolved that I urge all citizens to join the city of Oak Creek community in recognizing this historical cemetery in the city of Oak Creek, dated the 17th day of October, 2023.
Thank you, Catherine. Council?
I'd like to say something. I'd like to thank everyone who came to the dedication on October 8th. We had over 40 people there on Chicago Road for the rededication. It was a lovely afternoon, and Dan and Steve, I appreciate you being there. Oh, and Catherine, sorry.
It was a lovely afternoon, and this was a lot of work. They just didn't go out there and clear some weeds. A lot of research went into this. They talked about the Eagle Scout, helped through the GPS coordinates of this. If you really look back on it, they had a list of folks there, and some of them went back to the 1830s, as far back as they could identify. These are things that shouldn't be forgotten in the city of Oak Creek, and with the help of the Oak Creek Historical Society and many volunteers, it was a labor of love to bring this back, and if you do have the time, you know, stop and see it. It's part of the Oak Creek history, and you can learn more about it, as I said, at the Oak Creek Historical Society located on Fifth Avenue in Forest Hill. If you're interested, they're usually open weekends. So it was just great, but it's just amazing to think that, you know, people thrived and started to set up what we're enjoying today as far back as that. So it's only right we take a moment to recognize them, and more importantly, honor their legacy. And Lisa, you helped tremendously with this, so thank you. We need no action on this, so we will move right on into new business then. And that is consideration of a motion to concur with the mayor's reappointment to the Board of Health, Richard Baraboo. Did I pronounce that poorly? Sure I did. Either way, is there, the application is in your packet. Richard has served with us for many years, and he's up for another three-year term. I'd like to take this opportunity as well to thank Richard for his service thus far. We do appreciate when members of the community do take an interest in any of our boards and commission and share their time and talent with us, so. Sure? Yes?
His application isn't in the packet, but I will let you know that when I served on Board of Health, Richard was on the board back then, so he's been on that board for a whole number of years.
Yeah, I believe he's had a number of years on it. So if I'm mistaken, I thought, you're right, the application probably wouldn't be in there because he's a reappointment.
Yep.
So I am currently on that committee, and I've known Mr. Baraboo for some time because our boys served together in scouts, and he is wonderful to work with.
Great endorsement. So if there's no further questions, motion, please.
Marshall moves to concur with the mayor's reappointment as followed. Board of Health, three-year term to expire 10/2026 for Richard Baraboo, 960 Elm Road, Oak Creek, Wisconsin.
Guzekowski, a second. Roll call.
Alderman, Marshall.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Ritz.
And item eight is consideration of a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding between the city of Oak Creek and the Oak Creek Professional Police Officers Association regarding Article 9 and Article 10 of the labor agreement. So it's like Chief Stucker's coming up to fill us in on that.
Good evening again. Going over, and we sat down what happened, long and short, is in the end of 2022, when we were going through a couple of things, we noticed that with the change and how the structuring of paying and looping in the gun allowance that the rest of the officers get, we inadvertently created a loophole where this person was still into the collective bargaining unit and were under those regulations, so they also got the updated sergeant's wage with an additional 2% on top of it. So it goes back to a couple of things that I had brought up in the past in this training officer position, which we've had in place since about 2009, and it was a good time to look at things and rectify some things that may have been out of place for a while. So looking at that, we sat down, looked at it. We had a grievance back in 2009 because of the position, which was resolved in 2011 with an agreement with the city. So we couldn't just literally change it. We had to sit down and meet with the union. So I met with both Max and Andrew. We decided that I would go meet with union leadership and see if there was a resolution that we could come to on this, and looking at what was the historical aspects of both the position, but also the grievance and the agreement. So what we're able to do is come through and make this a position that was more codified in their collective bargaining agreement, if we go along with the MOU that we have in front of you tonight. What that does is it makes it a position that will be a union position moving forward, which it has been since inception, but what it also does is bring it back from a sergeant's rate and puts it at a detective rate, which is also within the collective bargaining unit, which would be right in line with kind of more of the jobs that that position does versus a supervisor, a sergeant that's actively supervising and brings on a lot more liability that this training position does not. It's an annual savings right now, about $5,200 with this change, and the, you know, the part that the union gets out of this again is it's codified that it's a position within their union moving forward and not something that would be of a non-represented position. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have specific to it or anything that you need me to clear up. Chief, you also mentioned at our meeting on Wednesday that this will take effect when the new training officer is appointed. Correct. So about midway through 2024, so once the new training position goes into effect, so the person in that position currently was under the impression this was going to be what they had moving forward. That position is up in June, so we'll be posting that as soon as this hopefully is approved in December to start that process moving forward, and whoever puts in knows exactly what it is that they're putting in for at that time.
Questions for the chief? Chief, I'd like to thank you for going to the table, and I'd also like to thank the bargaining unit for coming up with this MOU. Appreciate it. Hopefully it benefits all.
That's the hope as well. Detective Case is here from the union, and it was very much a collaborative effort, and I appreciate their efforts on trying to resolve this as well. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, motion?
I'll move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Oak Creek and the Oak Creek Professional Police Officers Association regarding Article 9 and Article 10 of the labor agreement.
Kurkowski, a second. Roll call.
Alderman, Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
And item nine concerns fire, and that is consideration of a motion approving a memorandum of understanding between the city of Oak Creek and the International Association of Firefighters, Local 1848, regarding Article 16 of the labor agreement. With us is Chief Kresik.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, we're seeking approval of an MOU between Local 1848 and the city of Oak Creek regarding the classification and rank of the fire inspector position. The fire inspector position in the fire department is currently in the bargaining unit, and the requested position associated with the MOU is also in the bargaining unit. Thus a reason for the MOU request. We're not requesting an additional position, rather we're requesting consideration of an MOU that outlines the reclassification of the fire inspector position. That's typically a firefighter position within our organization, either selected by the chief of the department or through a volunteer process. What we've learned over time is that the roles and responsibilities of that position have changed dramatically, much more autonomy with the position, the expectations of over 2,500 inspections, running the prevention program, interactions with the citizens, along with public education responsibilities, and in the near future, supervisory role over part-time inspectors has really expanded the scope of what we're expecting that inspector to do. The position, a job description has been created for that position, as with any new position within the city. The position would be filled by a typical promotional process, as covered by the labor union, typical department processes, and the police and fire commission. Be happy to answer any questions related to the MOU or the position.
Questions for Chief Kresik? Seeing none. Well, once again, I want to thank, I want to thank you, Mike, and the bargaining unit from 1848 for coming to an agreement on mutual benefit with the MOU. Okay. Motion then on nine.
I'll move to approve a memorandum of understanding between the city of Oak Creek and the International Association of Firefighters, Local 1848, regarding Article 16 of the labor agreement.
Marshall will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Thank you.
And article, item 10 is consideration of a resolution approving the state municipal financial agreement for sidewalk construction with the Department of Transportation, statelet roadway rehabilitation project located on South 27th Street. From engineering, we have Matt with us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Matt Sullivan, city engineer. Before he uses the resolution for approving that state municipal financial agreement for a sidewalk to be constructed along South 27th Street from Elm to Villa Drive. So within this financial agreement, the city would be responsible for 20% of the sidewalk cost and 20% of the real estate acquisition that's required for the sidewalk. There are some sections within this area that are not being included for sidewalk due to environmental grade changes and different constraints that would require much more real estate and costs associated with it. We were approached by the state engineers during their planning stages in regards to this, and we've kind of worked through areas that we felt were more advantageous for us to put the sidewalk in, meaning more areas where there is apartments, allowing walking to take place from apartments to other facilities that they would be able to use, such as grocery stores, restaurants, and stuff like that on Ryan Road. We've kind of worked through some of the details. If you've got any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
Matt, the only question I have, standard sidewalk, or will it be that, like, used path that we kind of put in like a long drive?
Standard sidewalk.
Greg?
Do you happen to know specific areas where sidewalk will not be put in?
So from, I believe we have right here, it's from Gray's Lane up to Anadale Boulevard. If you drive that area, you'll notice that there's a lot of guardrail, wetlands, very significant grade changes from the road and drainage areas that would make it much more difficult to construct.
And is this, I'm assuming this resolution is just for Oak Creek side of 27th Street?
That is correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Any further discussion? Questions? Okay. Motion on 10.
Park moves to adopt Resolution number 12438-101723, a resolution approving the state municipal financial agreement for sidewalk to be constructed with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, statelet roadway rehabilitation project located on South 27th Street from West Elm Road to West Villa Drive.
Guzekowski, a second. Roll call.
Alderman, Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Item 11 is also engineering and it's consideration of a resolution approving the state municipal maintenance agreement upon completion of the statelet roadway rehabilitation project located on South 27th Street.
Thank you. This follows up on the last item we had. This is just the state municipal maintenance agreement that is required by the state in order to install the sidewalk and maintain the sidewalk, much like we do with Milwaukee County or any other governing agency, that we do put facilities within their right-of-way. This will also include any, like, pavement markings for areas where we do cross 27th Street over to Franklin. We'll be responsible for the areas on our side. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Seeing no questions. Motion 11.
Park moves to adopt Resolution number 12439-101723, a resolution approving the state municipal maintenance agreement upon completion of the Wisconsin Department of Transportation statelet rehabilitation project along State Highway 241, South 27th Street, from West Elm Road to West Villa Drive.
Guzekowski, a second. Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
And item 12 concerns our treasurer, and that is consideration of a motion to designate Tri-City National Bank as a city's depository for banking services for a three-year period, with an option to renew for two additional three-year periods, and authorize the appropriate city officials to execute such contract agreements effective November 15th, 2023. With us is our treasurer, Sarah.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'm Sarah Koschinski, city treasurer. For over 40 years, Tri-City has provided banking services for the city of Oak Creek. I'm here to present the proposal, and there's a couple of things I want to highlight from it, the first being that there is a slight fee increase with this proposal, which amounts to about $2,400 yearly, and these fees are very competitive with what other Milwaukee County municipalities are currently seeing for their banking service fees. One thing I wanted to mention is that Tri-City has been providing our community with property tax collection services. Last year, they processed over one-third of our tax payments at all four of their locations plus their lockbox location. And the other item I wanted to highlight from the proposal is a change to how we will earn our interest, and this is just to align us with the rest of the Tri-City customer service base. I do have the Tri-City team here tonight with me in case anybody has any questions about the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Questions for Sarah or the Tri-City team?
How long have they been doing the tax collection?
Tax collection...
Guys, you'll have to come up to the microphone if you're going to answer.
Yes, since the beginning. I do have the Tri-City team here tonight with me in case anybody has any questions about the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Questions for Sarah or the Tri-City team?
How long have they been doing the tax collection?
Tax collection?
Guys, you'll have to come up to the microphone if you're gonna answer.
Yes, since the beginning, I'm fairly certain. I don't have an exact date on that, though.
Other questions, comments? No, Tri-City's been with us as long as I can remember, and truly our hometown bank started right here in Oak Creek, so it's good to see a local bank doing their service. If there's no further discussions or questions, motion, please.
I'll move to designate Tri-City National Bank as the city's depository for banking services for a three-year period with the option to renew for two additional three-year periods and to authorize the appropriate city officials to execute such contract agreement effective November 15, 2023.
Alderman, Gail, the motion excludes the option to renew for two additional three-year periods. My apologies. There's a corrected motion.
So noted with my original motion?
Thank you.
Okay, so we have an amended motion.
Guzekowski will second.
Just to be, just to be clear, the motion that's amended will now read, "A motion to designate Tri-City Banks the city's depository for banking services for a three-year period and to authorize the appropriate city officials to execute such contract agreements effective November 15, 2023." Second, it's an acknowledgement and agreement. Okay, roll call.
Alderman, Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
And item 14 is our vendor summary report for approval of October 11, 2023, in the amount of $1,943,642.38. Please take a look at your report, and if you have any questions, feel free to take the floor. Questions? Motion, please.
Marshall moves to approve the October 11, 2023 vendor summary report in the amount of $1,943,642.38.
Guzekowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And item 15 is consideration of a motion to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85 to discuss the following. A, Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub C, to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of the assistant city administrator, comptroller, city engineer, assistant comptroller, senior planner, and communications coordinator. And Gail?
Thank you, Mayor. Gail moves to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.85, to discuss the following. A, Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub C, to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of the city, assistant city administrator slash comptroller, city engineer, assistant comptroller, senior planner, and communications coordinator.
Guzekowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
At this time, we will convene in. We can, I'll make a motion to go into open session.
Gail moves to reconvene in open session.
Marshall will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
And there is consideration of action, and there is none, so that'll, before we adjourn, just want to remind everybody this October the 23rd, I believe that's Saturday, Fall Fest is happening. So it's our traditional Fall Fest at Drexel Town Square.